I'd like to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the living and the dead.
Thank you. This time I ask that you silence all electronic equipment. And call the order of the October 1st, 2013 Village Board Meeting. Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. O'Fallon.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
And we're all here. Closing under one, opener two, approve the minutes for September 17th, 2013, we're going to meet.
Uh huh.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Closing under two, open under three. Reports of committees. And first up, we have the code enforcement.
Go over September's activity for you real quick. September, we had 21 fire inspections, 217 for the year. We handled 32 complaints, 293 for the year. We've issued 41 building permits, that's 256 for the year. And 10 miscellaneous inspections, which include certificates of occupancy apartments and construction. And for the year, we've done 182.
Thank you. Anything for code enforcement at this time? No? Okay, closing under code, open under economic development.
I don't have anything. I wasn't able to make the meetings when insight was here. Were you able to go to that one?
Yeah, one, two, field goal. Obviously, with the discussions that hit most was the side of the Masonic Temple. Unfortunately, due to, I think, lack of communication as to what they were asking of the codes and that sort of thing, it just didn't hit us quick enough to respond to that. I know I give Kenny Codelle a lot of credit, along with a few others, trying to convince them to maybe look at a different shade or something that would be more appealing in the downtown area, but product was bought and it's up. So, that's about it. So, it's...I know there is a gentleman coming in from Albany, from the...maybe Sean can speak on this. A guy coming in from Albany, from the preservation, he starts up an state historic preservation office. Yeah, you want to share anything with us on that, Earl?
Well, it's coming in the middle of the month. We're going to have a little walk down downtown. We're trying to get some of the properties on the historic register. And it needs to go through that office. It's coming to see what we've done so far as far as identifying particular properties. And we're still working on the documentation, the facts about their historic significance, some of the architectural elements on them that should be preserved. And this will be his first visit here, his first time in here at committee, so we're hoping to, as a jumping out point, to meet him more frequently and working closer with that office.
Now, will Nicole or the other fellow, Rick, Howser, will they be here when that happens?
No, actually, because the approach is that instead of having...I think the committee's feeling is that he wants...we want to show them a local interest, a local initiative, as opposed to some hired consultant. In other words, you want to show them what we've done, how much a lot of businesses are on board and a lot of the people are on board, and more of the grassroots presentations and something from their aspect. They are always in communication with that office, so they realize that they're working with us, like this particular district in the community.
Sean, do you know if they're going to include...they talked about bringing him down to the weir and talking about that as historically important aspect of the community. Is that one of those?
Well, that's a little...that's a different aspect. It's...this is more for buildings on the historic register. We've divided the downtown into four quadrants. The quadrant we're concentrating on is quadrant two, which includes the block with the theaters in. So, east of Main Street and south of Philip Street. And that's the concentration right now. I think there's...may have been discussion, but not with that particular office, more with the DC and some of the other...but you're kind of all from a historic standpoint, just the history of the weir. Yeah, they're...they're more in structures that are still standing and still viable as far as the historic's given. I think because of the condition of the weir, that might not fall into the parameters of that particular...
Be a nice alley, though.
Oh, it would be. Well, we're going to take them through downtown, so you know, it certainly can be part of the...see, the big knock and crack is there's an age component as far as how old the buildings are, but that's kind of a moving target because it's like a 50, 60-year span. So, in other words, every year, some other buildings might come into the mix that wouldn't have...they might not this year, but next year, if we hit that magic number, then they are. As far as the historic register, it's like pre-1930, 1920, so it's such...the kind of trade.
Thanks.
Thank you on that. Anyone else? No? Okay, closing under economic development, fire committees. We met last week. We're going to meet again before the next meeting and nothing to record at this time. That's what you said or something? Personnel.
Haven't met.
Police.
Met with the chief this week and everything seems to be going well, busy. Congratulate him on another round of...another roundup of our outstanding citizens and hope that keeps progressing. Thank you.
Recreation.
We haven't met. We will be meeting next week with Tom and Rich. The other day, that model railroad really went real well, not as good as last year because last year they had lousy weather, people won't be inside. This year, with the weather like this, he said, but they had over 1,000 people in, which is good.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Street committee.
Nothing to report.
Under street committee, I wonder, at some time ago, we were approached by some residents on Liberty between Willow and...excuse me. Yeah, Willow and Center Street, trying to get that portion of Liberty to a one-way. Is that something you folks could talk about or investigate?
I had a discussion about that today with a resident who didn't work with such a good idea, so...
Actually...
Maybe a no left turn outside the street.
Just get together and talk to Haas and some of the others and see, you know, obviously we'd have to have a public forum in order to do anything. Anyhow...
I wonder, too, if they did the same thing they've done over here at Curves, is to block off the first park, the first couple parking stalls to give more sight.
More sight.
Actually, they're complaining about very little parking as it is now.
Well, I realize that, but it's a major safety issue, and I think it's a safety issue more important than a parking issue.
Again, if we could maybe get a report on that later. Water sewer.
Item E on the agenda, we'll be talking about a piece of that.
Okay. Also, took a trip up there to Highland Road. The...looks like everything's being bucked out there. They've completed their connections, so it looks like everyone's happy. I know I spoke with Joe Buffum, and he's pretty happy with the results of getting the fresh water and all that good stuff. So, made some good progress there. Okay, closing under three, anything else under that or...closing under three, open
It's time to hit old man winner with a one-two punch. It's time for a Fisher plow from Frenchy Chevrolet. The new Fisher XV2 plow features extreme flared wings, Fisher's trip edge design, super-fast hydraulics, and more. The XV2 gives you both outstanding performance and maximum productivity every time you plow. Frenchy Chevrolet, 255 East Orvis Street, Messina, your Fisher plow headquarters in
If you have a business and need more than just a computer salesman, StarTech is your answer. We have four technicians available with over 60 years combined experience for fast, efficient, quality service. We've been serving upstate New York since 1983. We support local and wide-area networks, and we service most makes and models of computers and printers. We have a complete in-house service facility, and we offer onsite service to most areas.
StarTech, computer, cellular, and music equipment.
You and the other agencies involved in the second portion of that operation, you know you have the full support of this board to...if you have Operation 13, just keep right on doing it, and you've got our support. Thanks for the job well done to you and your department, the other agencies. At this time, you have anyone who might want to speak, please keep it directed to the chair. And with that, I know Ben Todd's got something.
Yes, I do, sir. And I guess with that, I'll apologize to Patty because I talked to her earlier and she asked if I had any handouts, and I didn't at the time, but discovered a couple of things I'll pass out afterward, if that's okay. I know you've gotten them already, Mr. Mayor. But I'm Ben Todd, I'm the St. Lawrence County Tobacco Program Coordinator, and I've been here in the past. Most recently, we came with a couple of students from Messina Central. Happy to report that since then, Reality Check has had some turnover. That's the youth component of the tobacco program, and they're going to start doing...they're going to start a chapter in Messina, which to me is great because it's an obvious location to put a Reality Check program. So, happy to report that. But I really wanted to come and kind of refresh your memories on some of the information I presented in the past and also bring to light some of the issues that we're seeing currently. I think it's really important to remind people that tobacco-related illnesses are the leading cause of preventable death in this country. Every year, we see almost half a million people die from tobacco-related illnesses, and sometimes that kind of gets overshadowed by other issues we're dealing with. Really key point here is 90% of smokers start between the ages of 12 and 18. So, we really need to focus on what is the cause. These kids started experimenting with tobacco because we know that nicotine's the most addictive substance known to man, and 90% of people who smoke and do it for...you know, if they smoke a pack, basically, they're addicted. So, if you don't catch them early and you get them to not experiment, you're not going to make a lot of headway. The other big issue is the costs associated with tobacco-related illness. In New York State, we spend over $8 billion a year to treat these illnesses, okay? 2.7 billion of that is Medicaid, and in St. Lawrence County alone, we spend over $9 million a year of taxpayer money to treat tobacco-related illnesses. And we know that when people start, it's very hard to quit. If you ask anyone who's smoked in the past, you know it's difficult to quit. And ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure in this case. And a key to this experimentation is tobacco marketing. You've probably seen things on the...heard it on the radio, seen it on TV possibly, but we know that a third of youth experimentation is directly linked to tobacco marketing. There are other factors, absolutely. Parents who smoke, friends who smoke, it's all there. But the one thing we can affect, the one thing we can do something about is youth exposure to tobacco marketing. And frankly, there's too much marketing in stores. And now, we're seeing new products coming into the market, new flavored tobacco products. And the mayor's got a photo. I bring that up because in the last couple of years, and you'll all get a copy of the photo and also a copy of some recent activity, but in the last couple of years, we've seen more tobacco retailers come into the county. When Family Dollar started selling tobacco, they knew that the people who shop at those stores buy more cigarettes than the average person, so they got into the market. Since then, Dollar General has gotten into the market. So, we've got now a dozen more retailers in this county where kids go in with their parents, and the last thing they see before they leave is a wall of cigarettes. And I think it's...80% of kids who smoke, smoke the three most heavily advertised brands. They're brand loyal before they even begin. It's there. We know the industry is very keen to what influences kids, and that's why I'm here. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that because the costs are very high, both monetarily and health-wise, and we know nicotine's addictive. We need to get in the way of these things. So, another key, I think the best thing for you to remember as I pass these things out is tobacco, the only consumer product that, when used as the manufacturer recommends, will kill half of its long-term users. It's the only legal product they don't have. I've got one extra. With that, I guess if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, other than that.
Ben, a quick question.
Yes.
Obviously, you're with the county. How do you work with social services?
Well, we really work...I work with villages and towns and work with community members. We don't do individual work. I wouldn't go into social services and sit with counselors, but we do provide them with all the information that they need. Medicaid provides the best cessation service in the state. They provide not only nicotine replacement therapy, like the patch of the gum, but they also provide for counseling, which is essential to the success of people who are trying to quit, knowing how to use the products, knowing what their triggers are, what keeps them going back, so to speak.
Right, but I think my question more directed to, and I've had this discussion with Chris Rees and some of the others, that people that are in social services, you know, we see them cigarettes, tattoos, pit bulls, this, that, the other. How do we...how do we...how do we control...you talked about controlling costs. And again, that's a major cost that the taxpayers filtering money is to help people stay afloat or to eat, basically, but yet now we're seeing them buy cigarettes and whatever else they...
Yeah, I see where you're going. I see where you're going with that. And really, I think the best answer is that's an issue for the state to deal with, and I think it also speaks really directly to the power of the addiction. When you've got someone who has very little means but has that need, that craving that they have to fulfill, I mean, if you have to choose between an extra local bread or a pack of cigarettes, and you choose the cigarettes, I think that speaks volumes of not necessarily the willpower of the person, but the power of the addiction. So, and of course, that segment of the population is far more heavily affected than the average person.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. It's a...
Ben, a couple of questions. One of the things that we had talked about in the past was the opportunity to require out-of-sight, to have cigarettes covered, so that the kids wouldn't be barraged by them. I know New York City, I looked into that one. New York City was currently presenting legislation, and when you go up against tobacco companies, they put all efforts forward to fight you. So, a small community like ours, I'm kind of looking for New York City to be the lead. That would be phenomenal, but do you know if there's any progress made as far as legislation for that in New York State?
We're waiting on New York City as well because, like you said, they do have the means, but there are other things that have been done around the country. And I think that second piece I handed you speaks to the success they had in Providence, Rhode Island, where they made flavored tobacco kind of go away. There are things you can do with zoning. I brought that up because, you know, with the work that's going into citing a Boys and Girls Club, I personally would hate to see someone come in and set up a convenience store that has a huge tobacco display on the street, on the street corner between, you know, housing development and the Boys and Girls Club. So, there are things you can do to say, you know, you can't have a tobacco retailer within 500 or 1,000 feet of a school or a playground or whatever. I mean, there are so many options that can do the little things because, like you said, Tricia, it's a big step to do a display covering. I mean, they tried it in Rockland County and had the law passed, and the industry came in, and just the threat of lawsuits caused them to rescind the law, and that's, you know, that's why...
Well, she brings up a good point. I mean, she...you know, they did that with illicit magazines, with Playboy and stuff like that. Now, you see them on the count, on the shelves, but they're covered in plastic.
They're wrapped, I think.
They're wrapped, so...
And there's other...
It's all on the same lines, just to...
One of the other things that I think New York City was looking at was, and I forget what the legislation was called, but basically equal display space for anti-smoking messages. So, if you're a convenience store that wants to have a big poster up about your Marlboro Lights price, you have to have equal display about the effects of smoking. So, I don't know if that went anywhere. That's a really...you could...
Well, there are so many things. I know that Massachusetts, they have 63 municipalities that have tobacco-free pharmacy regulations, the operated pharmacy, unaccomplished. And that makes a lot of sense, given the mission of the pharmacy, now they get flu shots. All right, if you...
One more question, sorry. I think some kids are under the belief that these electronic cigarettes aren't harmful. What is...where does that kind of go?
There is very little research on these cigarettes. What we do have does not suggest that they're a very safe alternative. They vaporize nicotine cartridges using propylene glycol, which is basically antifreeze. And there just isn't any long-term studies on that, so you never know. It bothers me a bit because it's really kind of taking a huge step backwards. Remember in 2003, smoking in bars and restaurants? Since then, I have three daughters who have never been into a restaurant for people who smoke. We may have stopped at one in North Carolina a few years ago. So, for them to go into a restaurant and now see that as normal behavior is disturbing to me because we've made great strides in denormalizing tobacco, using a really affecting percentage of kids who are trying.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben. Anyone else? No. Okay, thank you. Any other folks? No? Okay, see you in my hands.
The new 2014 Ford Flex is truly a breath of fresh air, from its stylish and bold look to its spacious and comfortable interior. The new Ford Flex definitely has a style all its own. How about this new 2014 Ford Flex SEL, it features seven-passenger seating, heated seats, sync services, and more. Right now, lease this one for 36 easy payments of just $3.37 a month. That's less than $12 a day. Frenchy's Ford, 216 East Orvis Street, Messina, or visit frenchyfford.com.
Hi, I'm Mike Jones. We're here at StarTech Computer. We have computers, cellular telephones, and music equipment. We do repairs on most makes and models of computers, and we'd like to tell you what we got going on this week.
Smokey here from StarTech Computer, here to tell you about what has to be one of the cheapest cell phone companies around. It's $10 for four months with 100 minutes. That equals out to 25 minutes per month and $2.70. I don't know, too many cell phone companies that can compete with that. These guys have the same great coverage as one of the leading competitors in this market, so you're not going to have to worry about dead zones or call drops or any of that. And we do sell cell phones here. Some of the phones we have are like this Motorola phone. This is a flip phone. It does have a camera. It does have speaker phone. It is one of the cheaper phones we have. We also have the Motorola Razors, which are nice phones. And we sell the cards here, and we also have other plans here if you're interested, so
Supporting a green agenda, Wiley Trash Removal has been serving the community for over 40 years. Wiley Trash Removal also recycles cardboard and paper.
Proposal. This is kind of like an annual thing, so it's an agreement authorized to execute St. Lawrence County Snow and Ice Control Agreement, December 13, 2014, for the snow seasons. Is there a motion?
Uh huh.
Okay, Mr. Cardinal.
I just have to ask again, like I asked last year, is there ever taken a real close look at this and see if there were actually cost less money to do this?
That question I can't answer right at this time.
Because I was talking with somebody the other day, you know, the state loves this deal because they get out of time with three or four or five extra guys in each of their field offices with colleagues. It makes the municipality have people on hand 24/7 throughout a certain time of the year to cover in case snow. If it's a fall, they have to be out at a certain time. So, the municipality has to make sure they have enough people to cover that, or the state is free and clear of it once that, you know, for that period of time. They had to cover that. When you get those, you know, 10, 12, 14 days in the middle of winter time when there's no snow, they would have people hired that to...you know, they'd have to hire them part-time or whatever. That would be a renowned, those are big savings for the state. And also, each municipality accepts all liability for this. We talk about ways to, you know, worry about our liability, and I think if you look to our history of accidents, a lot of our accidents have been over out on state roads. So, it's just something to consider, I think.
Do you want to...I know there's a motion on the floor here, but do you want to pull off until next meeting to...
No, I think it's something that's got to be looked into because to see exactly...I mean, oh, you get paid for time and materials and vehicles, whatever, but you got to bank, you got to buy those vehicles and have those vehicles ready to go and everything else for another entity that, you know, and if you're not out there at a certain time, they come and, you know, and we ran into trouble with them over the period of time that they said that we weren't, quote-unquote, "our service wasn't as compatible or comparable to theirs." Then we got to the point where our service was better than theirs, and then they were upset that they were...it's costing them too much, so it's, you know, it's a...it's something to think about. I think you said, you know, Ford Flex Zero is around, we should have something, some kind of a study on that and see if we're actually, you know, whose benefit this is for.
This way, the way this thing is written, is between St. Lawrence County and the villages of Messina.
Because the county takes the contract from the state, the county subcontract to each municipality.
Trick along, then. Okay. So, I don't see the word town of Messina involved in this one.
So, what is your pleasure on this?
Right now, I'm going to say no to it for this year.
We have a motion, continue with...motion by...Wilson?
I'd like to see, like Francis said, I mean, I'm going to vote for it, but I'd like to see some, potentially, some more facts.
Yeah, we can do that.
Next year and see exactly how much is the county's service.
Can we actually get the fact figures?
Oh, I'm sure they've got it.
All right. Let's...
This would be something. I retract my...
This would be something else.
Yeah.
We can table it.
Okay, I'll retract my...
Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
I withdraw my motion.
All right. Okay, closing under A, open under B. Approve agreement between the Village of Messina and St. Lawrence County designating Messina Fire Department as the St. Lawrence County Backup for Emergency Operations Center. Ken, you want to share a little bit on that, for us?
Sure. I actually spoke to Jim Chestnut today, who is the head of the dispatchers, just to follow up on this. Basically, what the county wants to do, they want to move their backup 911 system out of Canton because that's where it is right now, because it doesn't make much sense if Canton goes down, then the potential it's down. So, they want to move it here to Messina, you know, for multiple reasons. Man station, you know, Messina electric, dank is in there, so they can tie into that, SWIC's in there. So, they would like to have us be the 911 backup center in case something happens in Canton. So, there'd be probably a 20-minute, 30-minute lag where we would have to do their duties until... until they can get here. But the equipment they're going to allow us to use when we have fire calls and that kind of stuff, it makes sense to get the backup out of Canton.
And they're covering all the costs.
They're covering all costs. The only cost that the village would incur is what we're paying now, which is the internet fees. So we're already paying for it, so they'll just tie right into that. So all this stuff is, you know, they're still working on the grants, but, you know, it'd be all microwaved and whatever, so...
And do you have the space to put what they need for it?
Yeah, basically, all it's going to be is, I'm talking to Jim today, a couple of computers, they, you know, basically where our dispatch stuff is now, so, you know, if they need a tower or an antenna, he said they probably... that would probably go on the lower tiers, because that's a nice high spot, and they would just microwave it to the fire station, however they do all that good stuff, so...
Okay.
You know, the nice thing about it is we get to utilize it, too. So, you know, you have the maps, you know, if there's a fire call, we can have the maps instantaneously instead of trying to figure out what number this is on the street and that kind of good stuff, so...
Good.
You know, and it's no cost to the village anyways.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Alphel.
Aye.
Mr. Carville?
Aye.
Mr. DeShay.
Aye.
Chair will tie. Thank you for that. Closing under B, open under C, proposed resolution for authorize the fire safety inspection We've had discussion over the past probably month now, now maybe even more than that, where when the folks, the firemen, go out to do the inspections and they invoice the facilities that they're inspecting, you've got a, say for example, a hairdresser salon versus Walmart, and we're charging the same rate, $25. So what Ken had come up with, and did some research with other municipalities as well, where they wanted to charge, change over to do it as a square footage fee structure, which makes a lot of sense because obviously the Walmarts, the Home Depots, all these stores, they anticipate the charge of being billed accordingly. And I think based on the time that it takes for these fellows to do that and do it thoroughly, it just helps bring those dollars back in to cover the costs incurred to the village. So, Ken, you want to speak more on that? Go ahead. I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Most of the people, like the smaller businesses, aren't going to see a difference. Like the mayor suggested, you know, the box stores, that we're spending an hour and a half in there, you know, and then you've got to follow up, so 25 bucks, the minute we leave, you know, the village is losing money, so it's just a way to recuperate the cost. But I think overall, I think most of the inspections, the small ones, people aren't going to... there's not going to be a difference in their fees, it'll still be their base fee at the $25, you know, so it's pretty straightforward. And I compared these numbers, I tweaked them a little bit more to other municipalities throughout the state that I talked to. They're fairly comparable. So it's nothing that we invented, it's just trying to recuperate the cost, I guess.
Make the motion.
I'll second that.
What's the biggest store we have as far as square footage?
I'd have to look, it'd probably be, it's going to be Home Depot or Walmart. Well...
I mean, square footage, is there anything over $100?
I don't know, I'd have to look. Well, maybe the...
Nothing?
Maybe the nursing home, maybe the Hart Haven, but with the way the Hart Haven does it, we bill each store individually, so... because that's the way we've done it in the past, they stop paying the bills for the tenants. So we would bill, that's what we've been doing, bill each tenant. But the nursing home, I'd have to actually check the square footage of that, because that's another big one. That actually takes longer than Home Depot and Walmart, you know, because there are all the little nooks and crannies and all the areas there.
Okay. Motion and second. Okay, Ms. Carville?
Aye.
Mr. DeShay?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Alphel?
Aye.
Chair will tie. Closing under C, open under D.
Oh, no problem.
I just don't want to thank you for doing all this.
Oh, okay. Okay. D, we have the approved addendum number one to the management agreement, MOU regarding the fire department foreman designated as the village code enforcement officer. I know this has been a sticky issue with everybody over the past several months. I myself personally, I think the firemen have done a tremendous job in providing this, the code enforcement support. I would like to see the code enforcement office as a, we want to call it, like a side entity of the fire department, and have our foreman designated as the lead agent of that, and then of course the supporting us as code enforcement officers and technicians.
It's time to hit old man winner with a one-two punch. It's time for a Fisher plow from Frenchy Chevrolet. The Fisher Extreme V plow takes efficiency and plowing to a whole new level. It features a completely redesigned blade with tapered wing design, gap coverage, high carbon steel cutting edge, and much, much more, providing you with the greater performance and reliability. Frenchy Chevrolet, 255 East Orvis Street, Messina, your Fisher plow headquarters in northern New York.
Fourth Coast Entertainment Magazine, published monthly, distributed throughout northern New York and surrounding areas, providing information on the arts, bands, concerts, nightclubs, recreational activities, and tourism, online at fourthcoastentertainment.com.
Well, I am four, is just what it says. We'll assist the park, we'll assist the town of Messina in commercial fire inspections and code enforcement on an emergency basis.
Agreed.
If an agreement, we've yet to adopt an agreement with them.
Where do we stand with that agreement?
Quite honestly, I don't know where we stand with that. I think there's still some issues that need to be ironed out. You know, there's not a problem doing it, but I think the reservation is, and I feel probably a sense of agreement where they have a code enforcement officer currently. And I think we're all aware of some of the issues that surrounded that. And I think if we do do the code enforcement on an emergency basis with the town, that it's not the code enforcement activity that their individual doesn't want to do.
Wouldn't commercial fire inspections be a revenue generator?
Yeah.
In Messina?
Right.
So why...
Maybe you need to break that into two sections.
Right. I guess that's...
Because that's not more.
Why wouldn't we want to do that?
No, we would want to do it, but again, it's to iron out issues that could arise. And I think this, quite honestly, I think this buzzes it out pretty good here.
This is the... this isn't the one they got?
No.
Today.
This is not the one.
So I'm not ready to vote on it today?
No.
Table this also, I think it's still...
This is what this is.
Have a chance to look at it.
This is different than the one that I meant this morning.
Correct.
So let's table it.
Tim's point, and one of the things I agree, the number four may need to be split into two, because if you leave and other code enforcement issues on an emergency basis that could be confusing. The fire inspections will be done for the town.
Yes.
Period.
Right.
Then five would be...
Okay, five would be the code...
Provide on an emergency basis, based on a...
Right, that makes sense.
As long as you got the word agreement. When you get an agreement, you've got to have two people to agree.
Right.
This here is not...
Right.
It's all the gold.
An MOU of the town. Is that... not an MOU, but an AMA of the town. How close are you?
Close, it's close.
That's a long putt.
It is a long putt.
Well, not for you. For me, it would be.
No, it's just, it's some things that have to be ironed out. You know, I'm going to tell you...
Like I thought the language that Matt had put forward was actually pretty good. You know, the most recent one that we've got?
For the office.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You stopped me, no, you stopped me going somewhere where I...
Where you didn't want to go.
Well, I do, but I'm not going to... anyhow. What the other issue is here we have on hand is the utilizing the foreman as the lead agent for the code enforcement. So if we... we could probably go ahead and approve that portion and do an addendum to number five. Do you follow me?
Pardon?
Number four?
Remove?
Adopted as is without four?
Keep four, that just states Messina Fire Department will assist town with commercial fire inspections.
I'd agree. Table it for the next meeting.
That's...
Let's not piecemeal it.
All right? The problem is, it's hard to get everybody to communicate when we don't see each other, you know, we don't have the opportunity to see each other as a group. So it's probably good to discuss it now.
Let's keep discussing, but I'm just not ready to vote on it. I have no problem discussing.
Right. So what I would do, like Tricia said, maybe just back out the code enforcement until we get a, some sort of agreement with the town, but continue on... well, again, I've sent the two communications for fire inspection, and I've yet to hear back. So there's a communication gap there.
So what happens if something in Messina changes? And we do hire a code enforcement officer? We go back to the future, we have the code enforcement officer. Now, this is linked in with bargaining unit agreement, correct?
And let me address that.
Okay.
Okay. We have village employees that are doing one hell of a job for us, whether they're union, non-union, blue, black, purple, I don't care what they are. They've been doing well, one hell of a job for us. They've taken the training, they've been going by the book, and again, I'll say this up and down, they've turned some of these neighborhoods right around because they've been diligent in doing what they've been doing, okay? They've got the best interests of this village because they're employees of the village, okay? Why we would want to go out and change that, I don't know. But the fact that they're union, I shouldn't have a bearing on it.
So why do we want to add an addendum to the agreement then? Why don't we just do it? Why does there have to be an agreement in place if... there's no problem, everybody's fat demon.
What are you referring to? Because you've lost me just for a second.
I mean, the... I see that this is an addendum to an agreement that was signed last year.
Which one are you looking at?
The sheet of paper we're talking, the one you got right in front of you, look at page one.
Yeah, this, right.
It's an addendum to an agreement. So how does this come out of that agreement if something changes now?
The agreement wasn't to have the foreman as the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I know, it's new.
That's new.
But it becomes part of a contract.
We've got language in the contract right now that's contradictory to this resolution.
Whether you're buying or selling, the Free Trader Magazine is the best place to look. Place a free reader ad, call 769-7149, or visit us on the web at www.freetraderfirst.com. Free Trader Magazine, the biggest little paper in the north country.
Come on into Frenchy Selects right now and harvest yourself a real deal this fall on a quality select pre-owned vehicle of your choice. How about this 2012 Chevy Captiva LTZ that features all-wheel drive, leather, and much more, now just $25.90? Or check out this 2013 Chevy Cruze 2LT that features leather, power driver and passenger seats and much more, now just $21.10? Frenchy Selects, corner of Route 37 and Parker Avenue, Messina, or visit frenchysselex.com.
Hi, I'm Mike Jones. We're down at StarTech at 260 East Orvis Street, right across from Frenchy Chevrolet. We have computer equipment, cellular telephones, and music equipment, and we'd like to tell you about one of the deals we got going on today.
Smokey here at StarTech Computer with the GMC Bulldozer computer package. This is a Foxconn motherboard with an AMD CPU. It has a quad-core 2.6 GHz socket AM3 processor. It's 3 GB of DDR2 RAM. It has a 500 GB SATA III hard drive, a DVD-RW burner with LightScribe, and we're packaging this with Windows 7, a Logitech USB keyboard and mouse, and an iink 28-inch full 1080p LCD flat panel display. This computer package has seven cooling fans plus the CPU cooling fan, three of which are LED. As you can see, they're red on the case. It has two thermal sensors, so you can keep an eye on your temperatures, and it has a vertical CD-ROM tray, and I'll show you that right now. Makes this computer very unique. The package is starting at $14.99. If you come in, we might be able to cut you a deal.
StarTech, computer, cellular, and music equipment.
I think we're putting too much language, trying to refine everything too closely everything else. I think this will lock us, not only lock us in as a board sitting here, but a few years down the road, it'll lock anybody else in coming here, future boards.
This is not about... this is having to deal with the foreman. If you look at one, two, and three...
There's still a contract that we're changing.
It's with the foreman. We're making him the code enforcement department head, if you will. It's going to fall into the auspices of the fire department. Take out number four for the time being. Take that right out.
Aren't we doing this now?
Without an agreement, yeah.
I mean, it seems to be working, why do we have to... it's not broken, why are we fixing it? That's why... if we're already doing it now, why do we need this paper to make it better?
No, that's a question for you.
Keep it rolling, that's...
I think it was a request for clarity more than anything, just because, like, things change. Newly elected officials sit at this table, and we'll have an agreement, and things may or may not change with the way we're doing codes, but how do we memorialize how we're operating right now for continuity's sake? Do we do it... it could be something different than a memorandum of understanding with the contract agreement, but somewhere we need to let these guys... contract agreement, but somewhere we need to let these guys know how they basically operate as a system. So this may not be the right format, it's just how do we do that?
And I'll tell you, I don't know how many days...
Do it with policies. You don't do it with, you don't modify contracts. You do it with a policy.
I'll show you a whole book. I'll hold you, I'll show you downstairs, a whole book of addendums.
That is a looked hard enough. Probably something, no. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I don't know how many times I get upset with Patty every day. If this was the private sector, this would have been done, it would have been done in a day. The problem with government, it's too cumbersome, and it's too, it's too, it's wild.
Well, and the reason we went down the MOU path is because during the previous contract, when we first started to have these guys serve as code enforcement backup officials, right, as a transitional thing, it was a way to basically document maybe we did the wrong thing then, but whether it's policies, whatever it is, we just need to get down on paper how this is supposed to run, so they know and we know.
Yeah, right, and once you put it in a contract that is negotiated, once you put it in policy, a policy can be, a policy may be changed any port of the union. So if you need to change down the road, it's a lot easier to do it if it's in a policy than if it's in a contract.
Right.
Mayor, can I just...
Yes.
Make two cents. Basically, when we start talking about this, this is just for the management one, this isn't the union one.
Right.
Basically, the way it states now, there is no language for the foreman to do any code work whatsoever. Basically, this was just putting in place, okay, the foreman, not saying me, it could be anybody, is gonna do code work, 'cause the way it's written, like, not written, the foreman doesn't have to do code work. You know, I don't know if that's a policy or, but basically, since there's been the absence of the code officer, I've taken on those duties of signing bills and...
And I agree with you. I think we're getting confused as to what the stewardesses are doing versus what we're gonna have the code, or, excuse me, the foreman doing. It's two different agreements. This is just what the foreman...
But we're still into a contract, we're still starting to change the contract. That's where I'm coming from. But as a policy, then it's each year to get out of or change if you need to change it down the road. But once you put it in a contract, then you have to negotiate it to get it out.
Basically, I know Tim mentioned about, you know, code, their village code policies. Basically, we understand those, but we've been waiting for something to put those policies into a procedure, because right now, there really isn't a procedure.
They're just hanging out there.
We're just hanging out there. So basically, we're looking for something, okay, this is how we're gonna go, we're gonna make a procedure for this policy. And I started doing that over the weekend, but without something, I don't know if it's a memorandum of understanding, because I did go through the management people to make sure that this is the right way to go. I don't know if it's that, but if we're gonna have it right, we should have a procedure of what to follow. When someone comes in, this is what everybody is gonna do, instead of A's doing this and B's doing this, and that way, everybody's on board. Basically, you know, I don't know if this is the right thing to draft up, but there, something had to be written, basically, so...
I'm gonna suggest you just hang on to the next meeting.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? Who's fired for me?
Me.
Francis and Tricia. Together with Ken and maybe the attorney. Sit down and have a discussion as to what's the best direction to take. Verbiage-wise, everything. And have the attorney sit down, look at it, come back with his recommendations based upon your, all your involvement, and we go from there.
I don't think you got it, I mean, Matt's a great guy, but I don't think we need to waste his time drafting a policy. There's nothing wrong with the way this is written, except for the fact I don't want it to be part of a labor agreement, I'd just like to see it be a policy. Plain and simple. Francis hit the nail on the head, wants something in, he can't get it out. And I don't want to tie a future board's hands. We've had our hands tied quite often, and it's not very, you know, it's not fun to get out of the knots. We're trying to legislate something that doesn't need to be legislated. Right? I mean, that's my personal opinion. I may be down, but...
Okay, so we want to table this for the time being?
Yeah. But I think it's a good idea to have, I just, I think Francis, Trish, and I think if you get together, I don't know that you need to sell Matt with it. You know, he's gonna throw a whole bunch of adverbs in there that's gonna cost you money.
Okay. Alright, so we'll table this one then. Okay, closing under D, open under F.
Frenchie Chevrolet has your new 2014 Chevrolet and the lease deal you've been waiting for. Check out this real deal. Check out this new 2014 Chevy Equinox LS that features all-wheel drive, CD, MP3, power driver seat, gets an estimated 29 miles per gallon highway and much more. Right now, lease this one for $39, easy payments of just $272 a month. That's less than $10 a day. Frenchie Chevrolet, 255 East Orbus Street, Messina, or visit frenchiechevy.com. Chevrolet, find new roads.
There's always something going on at St. Lawrence Center. What brings you to St. Lawrence Center? I love all the products and entertainment too. What brings you to St. Lawrence Center? Their prices are affordable, my favorite place to go to have lunch. There's always something going on at St. Lawrence Center.
Hi, I'm Mike Jones. We're down at StarTech at 260 East Orbus Street, right across from Frenchie Chevrolet. We have computer equipment, cellular telephones, and music equipment, and we'd like to tell you about one of the deals we've got going on today.
And here we have a beautiful Epiphone DAS Studio Guitar. This is like a lower-grade version of a 335 Gibson. Great for blues, jazz. This is actually Smokey's favorite guitar here in the store. Catch him playing all kinds of blues. And the out-of-tune Beatles tuning. I will tune it if you buy it. This guitar is going for, last I remember, I think it was 300. So come in, I may give you a special deal on this one as well.
StarTech, where we make things work for you.
This is a program that the City of Ogden's Word has become the lead agent on. What there is out there, there's a grant floating around that, it's all going through the burb, and what it is, is records retention program. It's, there's no costs, there's no anything. It's just a backup for all the water, sewer, the whole gamut. To be inclusive in this program that's between the state and Ogden's Word. In fact, they were talking about it at the mayor's dinner the other night, and there are, just about every municipality is climbing on board with this.
It's a good idea, because Messina has a lot of, I think, GIs programs, and all their, we're just gonna make that data available, so it gets into this bigger system.
Right.
And, you know, probably be web-based, better software, and it'll be cheaper, you know, it'll be cheaper, it's web-based. I think it's really...
Right, there's a question at the bottom, it says, "We assert a permanent commitment." What do you mean by that? That's the last line on the first page.
Oh, lastly?
"The City of Ogden asserting a permanent commitment."
I believe that means that they'll always have someone available to provide them with the records, just have them, give them access to records. I asked them that, too.
Yeah, that's the agency that's providing the service. They're gonna have somebody available at all times. Do I hear a motion?
Uh-huh.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Carbal?
Hi.
Mr. Shadys?
Hi.
Mr. Offeld?
Hi.
Ms. Wilson?
Hi.
Interim one. Okay, closing under E, open under F. This is another good thing that we're working on. I don't know if a lot of you are aware, maybe you are. We've approached the county on numerous occasions to venture off on our own, to do our own hauling, to, what was it, Dank or something like that, or Rodman, and because of the costs that were occurring, this is just one portion of it where with the sludge, the amount of money that we're spending, Haas wants to go out just to look at bids, not to commit or anything like that, just to kind of put, you know, go to one step further and, you know, something that we don't have to do down the road, just get some RFPs and see what comes back as far as hauling the sludge for us.
I mean, just to clarify, this isn't the same as the solid...
It is, it isn't the same, but it's similar.
Right, but I mean, it's not...
The transportation.
It's not the county that hauls.
No.
It's a different...
Yeah, and we're committed to take it to a certain landfill. We're not allowed to put that in Rodman. We're controlled here by the DEC where that stuff can be dumped.
Yeah, Seneca Meadows or something like that. I mean, it's on the same principle, where, you know, we can save money somewhere.
Yeah.
So, do the study, find out.
Yep, absolutely.
Ask for a proposal, we can do some of the hauling.
Do you want to make that motion, Francis?
I'll do it.
Second?
Hi.
Paul's favor?
Hi.
The post? Post you carry? Thank you on that. Okay, closing under F, open under G.
Slugs were there, I didn't mean to interrupt. You want to segue onto that, the discussions that we've had? I mean, you just said 10,000-foot elevation, what we talked about, the solid raise.
Right. Well, again, we approached the county, and there's a couple of different scenarios out there that, I believe his name is Mr. Morrow, had, what, Morrell?
Morell.
Morell. And he had, obviously, they don't want the borough of Messina to leave their operation, being that we're 40% of their business, which would impact them tremendously. Probably impact them enough to get right out of the business themselves. He has suggested surcharges and added fees and all this other good stuff to the small hollers, so more or less penalizing everybody else for the direction that Messina wants to take. We still maintain that we could do it cheaper than what they're doing currently, in the tune of close to over $100,000. They're gonna fight us tooth and nail, but we're committed that this board, I believe, would be committed that we're not gonna pay one nickel more than what we're currently paying for the hauling of our wreckage and the tip fees and such. So if you want to chime in a little bit, Tim?
Well, you know, I guess in the county's defense, they are looking at different options. Remember, they came up with, there's five different options that they could do to implement to save money, and I mean, they were, one of them was just get out of the business altogether and privatize it. The other was, I guess, at the other extreme...
Do nothing.
To do nothing. So somewhere in, I've always said the truth is somewhere in the middle, and I think that's where we're leaning. They're examining costs, and they're bumping up against their budget, I think, is, for some reason, October 7th is, is bouncing around in my head, but we attended a meeting a couple Mondays ago, and they had significant discussion on the issue, and by significant, I mean, about 90 minutes worth of discussion. So it's not, you know, it's not just the village of Messina that's having issues, it's a lot of other people that are having issues, whether it's to avoid them to examine their costs and come up with less expensive ways to get rid of garbage. Garbage is the new oil.
Right. One thing I don't understand is that we're being forced to go 128 miles when we have a station 28 miles away from us, but yet again, the thumb is over our heads to take it down to Dank, and I know there's a couple of different reasons there, too, and it's mostly political, I would think.
Well, I think it's, I don't know if it's so much political as much as it's a, what's the word I'm looking for? The tonnage. I mean, the more tonnage that our county can bring to Rodman, the cheaper the cost is for everybody.
Right, but it's...
If we were to hob out and, let's say that we did decide to take it to another location, and everybody else is just gonna...
Right, but it's what I understand.
Messina is, we're definitely a player, and, you know, all the cards were, nobody was hiding their cards. Messina's a player, and they were very interested to hear what we had to say, and I, you know, I was glad to see the discussion that went on. And I mean, you know, Haas did an excellent job out laying out our, you know, the quandary that we're in. And it started, it wasn't just this, I went to the last two meetings, but I believe Haas and Jimmy may have went February of 2013 to a meeting to discuss it as well, so... And it's not a, at the county, I can guarantee you, it's not a Democrat, a Republican issue. I mean, you've got people all over the board there, you've got big towns, little towns, everybody's all over the board. You can't, you can't line them up and figure out, this guy's gonna go this way, and this guy's gonna go another way. It was, I thought the discussions were real refreshing, to tell you the truth. And I think we're gonna get something good out of it.
I do too, actually. Anyone else? No? Okay. Closing under F?
The new 2014 Ford Focus sedan is your friend at the pump and your love on the road. The new Focus is driving dynamics at its best, and if you're looking for fuel economy, then this is your car. How about this new 2014 Ford Focus sedan that features SyncVoice activated services, six-speed automatic transmission, gets an estimated 37 miles per gallon highway and more. Right now, lease this one for $36, easy payments of just $179 a month. Frenchie's Ford, 216 East Orbus Street, Messina, or visit frenchieford.com.
Hi, I'm Mike Jones. We're here at StarTech Computer. We have computers, cellular telephones, and music equipment. We do repairs on most makes and models of computers, and we'd like to tell you what we've got going on this week. Hi, down at StarTech Music, we have a complete line of student band instrument rentals. We've got saxes, clarinets, violins, trombones, trumpets, drums. We have violins, saxes, clarinets, drums, trombones, trumpets, and violins, saxes, clarinets, trumpets, trombones, and more. If you're interested in band instrument rental, the first payment covers the first three months. If your student decides to keep playing, all of the rental money is applied towards the purchase. If the student decides not to keep playing, you return the instrument and owe nothing. StarTech, where we make things work for you.
Another one of your headlines.
Well, we've finally had some discussion with the town. I met with the supervisor, I believe it was on Friday. I met with the supervisor, I believe it was on Friday, and told him that we were going to put together an agreement that best fits the village and the police department. So what we've outlined today, meeting with him, we're going to have an agreement that takes place October 1, today, provided they, they accept it tomorrow at their meeting, to have an emergency meeting tomorrow. Basically, the same parameters in the agreement before, the only things that will change, this will be effective October, today, October 1 through December 30, uh, 31, 2013. Now, the rate will be $68.58 per day. That's what captures the cost of our officers going out there and, you know, accumulating a little more time and what have you. The town owes us, oh, probably close to $60,000, someplace in there.
A year.
No. So it's, it's pretty substantial. We've asked that they make us whole at tomorrow's meeting, and I know there's been a, kind of a mix-up in the paperwork that the, the town was supposed to provide TSA, that's kind of probably what held everything up. But at any rate, it looks like we're, we're, we can help them out, and in the meantime, look for other, other avenues of, of security for the, for the airport. Again, if anybody read the Watertown Times on Saturday, this is the same type of thing that's happening with the city airport there, where this time it's the sheriffs that are having an issue with providing support. So as the TSA continues to reduce what they're paying the municipalities, it's gonna take an effect. With that, there's a whole slew of other issues that come in, and Chief can chime in in a second, but there's the question of jurisdiction, there's the question of hiring private agencies and the training and such that's, that's needed for that, so Chief, do you want to just?
Sure, thank you. I provided you with information last week, and I also provided you information today, this packet, which kind of details the history of this. I want to just highlight a couple of things. I think it's important to point out that the village of Messina, the police department recognizes the importance of the airport. We've not been paid for a year, so that should demonstrate, we, we represent that, or we understand that it's important that we continue to provide the service so the airport stays open. We've not had an agreement in place since the spring of this year with them to provide the service yet, we've continued to do that, so we cer- I certainly recognize that, Mayor's office has recognized that, that's why we've been trying to work really for the last three years on trying to resolve this issue, is the reimbursement rates have dropped significantly, first in half, and now we're getting it paid, reimbursed for about a third of what we were for the first six years of this nine-year agreement. So if you were to think of it in terms of running a business, if all of a sudden you were getting one-third for the product you've been providing for nine years, you might be concerned about whether or not you're being paid for the service properly. And that's really what's brought this to a head, and it's, it's been, it's a TSA decision on how they reimburse over, over the last several years, so. The other thing that's been somewhat misreported is, it's not a security agreement, it's a law enforcement agreement. Post-September 11th, TSA allowed security firms to provide security at some of these airports. That changed in 2004 where they required law enforcement officers so that arrests could be made at these checkpoints. So it's a law enforcement contract, it's not a security services. It was, if it was the security needed, we'd be really simple, attack and go out and hire a security firm like they did in the past. And incidentally, just as a footnote to that, when a private security firm was employed prior to 2004, they were paid $130 an hour to provide that service. If you took that hourly rate at the current flights that go out of Messina Airport, that would translate to $142,450,000 a year, is what the town would be paying for that security firm. That's a rate that's, you know, six, seven years old, nine years old, actually, I should say, so. So if you, if you look at the current schedule at that hourly rate, it'd be a significant amount more than what has been paid to us. So we had a very good meeting this morning with the town supervisor, the mayor and I. We reached a preliminary agreement on a three-year, a three-month contract with them so that we could provide, continue to provide services, law enforcement services at the airport. This agreement would do three things. It'll allow the town supervisor and the town to continue discussions with TSA on the current security plan for the airport, trying to modify it, trying to make some change, whatever the case may be, whatever they're able to work out with, with the TSA. It'll also allow the town to evaluate other options. If, if it's gonna be required to continue as is, are there other options available for them? And finally, if none of that pans out, it allows us some opportunity and some time to sit down with the town and to talk about, you know, what's fair and equitable with regard to how much we should be paid for. The contract list on number two there on the first page, 6885, which is, breaks down to $22.96 per hour for three hours a day. That's the current reimbursement rate that TSA pays for this airport if the town shows, so chooses to file the paperwork to get reimbursement back from TSA. So for the three months, if they file the paperwork and it's in order, then what we would charge the town, TSA would fully reimburse the town of Messina that amount, so the town would be whole on that. And as discussions go forth in the next few months, we'll keep you updated. If you choose to pass this, the town is expected to meet tomorrow to consider this, so it would be in our best interest to certainly have some type of agreement in place so that, you know, we're being reimbursed at least for the current rate that we're proposing.
So effectively, Tim, this is about 25K a year we're gonna get from them, right? I just did it times 365.
That's, that's-
Which is about what they're getting back from TSA.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Correct.
They're giving us all that they can give us, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they haven't received any money in the last year. In, in the fiscal year, it just expired yesterday, federal fiscal year, they did not receive any money from TSA.
So will they be able to go back, or is that what Joe's trying to figure out?
I think that's a question the town supervisor's gonna have to answer for you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is, nobody wants to quote the airport.
Yep.
Right?
No.
No. The, you know, I, I know that there's been discussions in the past about, can anybody else help our, our police force out? State police said no, they've all, basically, you've said no. Have we talked to their bosses? I mean, I'm not talking to Chief of Police. I mean, if you and Joe talked to the local people and have said no, everybody's got a boss.
I, I, you know what, I don't, I, I haven't, I haven't spoken with anyone.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it's easy to say no.
Yeah.
Then we go away.
I know he's going to reach out to speak with the border patrol supervisor up here.
Right.
You know, I had even suggested, you know, talk to Owens or one of those guys, you know, and see what, see what's up with that, and maybe being a, a, you know, a bordered community and, and all that good stuff, you know, that there may be some federal funding that could help us through that avenue.
I mean, make no bones about it, it is, we're gonna get reimbursed, but it is still costing the village of Messina money to provide this service.
Correct.
Okay, it's not the town's fault, because that's all that they're getting back on, you know, saying, hey, does somebody help us out to lessen the burden? Anyway, you're doing the best, yeah?
The current, the $22.96 per hour, by the way, incidentally, is a rate that's set by Congress, not set by TSA, so Congress has already weighed in on what they think should be reimbursed.
They can help.
And they have a lot of problems. The other issue, there's been a number, there's been a lot of discussion regarding us using part-time people, and as you know, we currently have two part-time employees that work the court. It really sounds good on face value, and it's workable, it is workable, but for the number of flights, which is three a day, for us to hire enough part-time people that are willing to spend an hour's worth of time, but that probably includes an hour getting ready, traveling out to the airport, doing their detail, and then going back home for an hour's pay, which the current rate is substantially lower than the $22, that's a challenge. Plus, if we were to hire additional part-time people to cover the airport, we have annual training that they have to have, there's equipment needs, there's uniform needs, so the, the costs continue to pile up for us, yet we're seeing our reimbursement rates reduced significantly, so if that's the path we choose, then we have to sit down and have some serious dialogue with them regarding what our actual expenses are and what they're reimbursing us for.
Yeah, the part-time, like you said, a challenge. You've got, you worked that, or you worked that into the last contract so they could pinch-hit when they got an emergency.
Correct.
Which was, and that's, that's how we sold it, so that's, that's, that's definitely how it was meant to be done.
Anyone else?
Also, like a good, good path forward?
Look for motion to, motion by Wilson?
Second.
Second by all, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Vote if you care. Okay, thank you on that.
And that is contingent upon the county's rule.
That's contingent upon the town's rule. Okay, closing under-
Frenchy Chevrolet has your new 2014 Chevrolet and the lease deal you've been waiting for. Check out this real deal. Check out this new 2014 Chevy Cruze LTZ that features a power sunroof, Pioneer audio sound system, remote start, and much more. Right now lease this one for 39 easy payments of just $239 a month. That's less than $8 a day. Frenchy Chevrolet, 255 East Orbis Street, Messina, or visit frenchychefy.com. Chevrolet, find new roads.
These vehicles look brand-new right off the showroom floor, but they're not. They've been detailed by Final Touch Detailing. If you can drive it, Final Touch can detail it. Trucks, boats, cars, and bikes. It's time to think about getting your vehicle ready for the winter weather, while Final Touch Detailing can take care of you. Their services include wash, including undercarriage and engine compartment, vacuum shampoo and steam clean, Scotch guard treatment from fabric, leather treatment, wax and buffing, and much more. Get that car show quality detailing today with Final Touch Detailing. Call 842-9810, that's 842-9810, or email O D I E 7342 at yahoo.com.
Hi, I'm Mike Jones, we're down at StarTech at 260 East Orbis Street, right across from Frenchy Chevrolet. We have computer equipment, cellular telephones, and music equipment, and we'd like to tell you about one of the deals we got going on today. Here we have it, it's Sonic, VFXSD synthesizer, regular $399. Let's say you saw this on WNTS TV, come on down, $50 off. Take it home, play all your favorite songs. StarTech, where we make things work for you.
Yes, they are, sir. Excellent job, gentlemen. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Vote if you care. Closing under six, open under seven, luckily reported. Just a fire break. Uh, closing under seven, open under eight, communications correspondence. Nothing there. Under eight, uh, closing under eight, open under nine, closing public comments. And the rule applies. And the gentleman is back.
Sean Gray, 56 East Orbis Street. I'm basing my comments on figures that I've heard in this room and read in the newspaper, and I believe that the cost of switching over for the village of Messina to haul their own trash, some of the numbers I heard were $1 million for a compactor and transfer station, a couple of tractor trailers, which I think are going for about 200 grand apiece right now, you probably need some extra trailers, three to four employees, which would be another 150 to 200 grand with benefits. That's not to mention the fuel, the tipping fees, and maintenance on that equipment. So you're up between 1.6 to 2 million. It would save you $100,000 a year, it would take you 16 to 20 years before you even started realizing a benefit from it. And at that point in time, you'd probably have to be replacing tractor trailers and major work on the compactor, so I just, I guess, my only comment is I don't understand what the idea is to go into hauling because it's, um, economy of scale, that's what allows them to keep the tipping fees as low as they are. The more trash they get, they can keep the fees lower for everyone. But if the savings is only roughly $100,000 a year, and if those other numbers that I heard in this room are correct, I'm no mathematician, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to spend one and a half to two million dollars to save $100,000 a year. It's gonna be a long time before you realize any savings on that kind of investment.
Okay, anyone else? Sir?
Ryan Barton, Curry Observatory. Wondering, would the fire inspection increase in fees, I'm wondering what you anticipate your additional revenue will be from that?
Hard to tell until we find out, get a map of the square footage and stuff.
What is the cost of that program? Is that just a, a fire and on routine duty handling that task?
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering, is Walmart taxed higher than the beauty spot?
Is it taxed higher?
Yeah. Is it bigger building, does it have a higher tax?
You honestly want me to answer that question?
Yes, yeah, I do.
I would dare say yes.
So, so you're hitting the big guy twice? He's already paying for the guy once who's working, so there's no additional cost, but you just, at some level, we don't really know what it is-
Right.
-have increased the cost on business. At the same time, we're telling people we want to grow business in our community.
Right.
I'm wondering if, maybe you're sending a wrong message there, Mr. Gray.
We don't know that yet.
So what, what, you're recouping costs, what costs are you recouping?
I'll tell you what, see me in my office and we'll discuss it.
Hey, it was a full board decision, so I'd like the answer here.
Sure. When, when, if you have some time, stop in my office and we'll discuss it.
So there is no answer to the question?
If you stop down in my office, I'll discuss with you. Anyone else? But you've still got three more minutes.
I think you're hurting all the businesses in town that are bigger than a beauty spot. My question, wisdom of the decision, it was made with no discussion, and you don't know what the revenue increase is gonna be.
That is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I yield my time.
You don't yield time here. You can cancel your time. Anyway, anyone else? Nope, see no hands, make motion.
Sacred people.
Two jurors. Oh, wait a minute, whoa. Yep, we have to go into executive session for a couple of different things. Uh, for a contract negotiation with the power authority. That's NYPD. NYPD. Okay.
And what else? You said two things?
Yes, and, uh, for a contract with the Messina firefighters.
Do you anticipate action?
No. I don't. Do I hear motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Vote if you care. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming in. Lady and gentleman.
Come on into Frenchy Selects right now and harvest yourself a real deal this fall on a quality select pre-owned vehicle of your choice. Here is what you've been waiting for, a 2013 Chevy Bolt that features leather heated seats and much more, now just $34.5. Or check out this 2011 Chevy Silverado 1500 LT extended cab truck. Or check out this 2011 Chevy Silverado 1500 LT extended cab truck that features a powerful 5.3-liter V8 engine and much more, now just $26.9. Frenchy Selects, corner of Route 37 and Parker Avenue, Messina, or visit frenchyselects.com.